Thank you. Our first case is 0708 Lance Rep, University of States.
Hi, my name is Lance Rep with the University of States. I decided to come back today just to follow up to the previous couple of meetings that I've had on the several projects going back to April 19th. Just as another update to you. I've met with the Shade Tree Commission and got their approvals on the projects and went to the Disabilities Committee Commission last night and showed them all the projects and everything and got their input. And today we had a meeting with Ray and four of his staff members to iron out some of the issues on sanitary and water and the roads and stuff like that. We had a good meeting, some good points were brought up and we both sides have some follow-up to do on that. Couple of questions that you had last week. I double-checked to make sure, I think Mayor, you raised a question about the water tower. It will have a fence around it and that fence will be shown as well as the road over to the main road, so that'll be an access road. Then the water line coming up is just an easement for a water line to come up. And also Altamont Drive will end at the stub as it comes down off the hill and it's built in such a manner that it's a turnaround that will be then converted into Stone Ridge coming down off the hill at a later date. The utilities will follow that route and they'll follow where the easement is for Stone Ridge and then when we put Stone Ridge in, it'll be right beside the utilities. I've talked with Steve Pearson a couple of times on the application fees and he and I probably got one meeting to finalize that on the amounts for the application fee. I plan on turning that in on the 26th, which is next Wednesday, which allows your deadline to meet the October 4th meeting. And I still like to try to keep things moving to meet the schedule to get these projects through. So, I guess, is there any questions that any of you have since the last meeting that I can take back to my engineers to make sure that we incorporate? I did fail to mention last Friday, we met with Burgess and Naples with Bill Garrett and Ben Somato and showed them all the plans and I got them up to speed so that when we give our full package to them, you know, they got a little history behind what we're trying to do. Actually, very good meeting, they were very cooperative. They also gave me an update on Grand Vista, which is all we need to do is the land development permit or land use permit, land development permit. And they had asked that we do two more borings on two locations because of a retaining wall and so they're out there doing that right now. So that part of it's coming along very well. So again, I'll be coming at your next meeting with the finals on the residential villas in the High Point Village. The other issue is the plat and I have all the information for the plat to start through the procedure. So is there any questions that anybody has?
The only thing Lance, that I had thought of, maybe been brought up at this staff meeting you went to, is the hillside regulations section of the subdivision talks about lot size with respect to slope and steepness of the lots. And I didn't know if, because there's open space in behind it, they're probably designed in such a way that that doesn't affect the size of lots, but if, some of that terrain entry there is challenged, just that way.
The two cul-de-sacs, Mayor, that in residential phase two are on a ridge top and that was one of the issues that we discussed today, that the, I think it was Walnut Court, because of where we're running sanitary and everything, we may have to lose a lot there, shorten the cul-de-sac just a little bit. And the point I'm getting to is the back two lots at the end of the cul-de-sac were our only two concerns on the hillside issue that you're talking about. So that might end up taking care of itself.
I figured they'd probably have looked at it, but I just wanted to be sure.
Right, Andy and Ray and everybody caught that today, so that was one of the issues we discussed.
Does anybody else have a question?
So if I remember it correctly, right now on the Altamont, let me see if I get this, you're gonna end it, you're gonna continue it into the other lot?
Yeah.
And then make a cul-de-sac there but not make the Stone Ridge down to there? So it's sort of, it's still a road to nowhere?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn.
The next thing is, we don't have any other cases scheduled, the next thing is communications. We have a communication regarding a subdivision to be brought up at the next meeting, information, this is information only. Steve, the Plains?
Paul. Please have subdivision.
Scott.
I was thinking the 150 acres. Yeah, I gave you a little bit of pre-information on a request that I've received from an owner of property in the Plains, which is within the three-mob planning jurisdiction, to take a lot that has two structures on it now and essentially divide it in half so each of those structures has its own lot. I did point out, you know, the tremendous amount of deficiency between 2,500 and 3,500 square feet of lot area that's proposed compared to 20,000, that's the minimum. The 20,000 square foot minimum for a lot is mostly driven by stormwater control and in this particular area, there are curbs and gutters. If you have curb and gutter, it drives that minimum lot size down to 9,450 square feet. But in this case, this is not right on one of the main routes, it's not on 682, it's not on Connet Road, so there's no curb and gutter. And I just explained to the applicant that, you know, the permit would be refused, it has been refused already, Mr. Hazel signed the refusal. And he then has the opportunity to appeal, so I just wanted to let you know what might be coming on that.
Okay, thank you. The other communication is about the land development permit application for the summit at Coates Run, is that just to keep us informed of what's going on?
Yes. The Planning Commission knows where we are in the process.
And then we have the ordinance from City Council to establish Title 41 site plan review. We didn't have this copy at the last meeting and this is, the original meeting when we discussed this, we were working from different copies of this ordinance. And this was the one that we went through and tried to bring up to date and have it all agree, but I haven't read it yet, I just got it. Okay? So unless somebody wants to ask a question about it, I think we had to read it first.
Right.
I don't have any other communications, does anybody else have a communication? That's why I looked at you, because you always have.
What did it last?
That's true, so you can have more this week.
Since the last meeting when Dave Hoysington came in, the developer for Tyler Ridge, it was the last meeting, he'd called me up and wanted some additional information and we had discussed, in my understanding what happened at the last meeting was his original preliminary plan approval had expired, he was to reapply for new preliminary approval, submit the appropriate fees, and then after that go to final. He'd asked me some questions about signature lines that were necessary on the final plat and I reviewed with him those that are necessary. He had mentioned, should I have a sign-off line for the sheriff or the fire department? I said, no, just make sure you've got that written documentation to submit back to the Planning Commission, don't include those as signature lines on the plat. So I expect Mr. Hoysington will soon be coming back in for a new application for preliminary approval for Tyler Ridge subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's the first one. The second one, just so you know, Police Captain Tom Pyle and I will be going to the Executive Committee meeting of the neighborhood associations to discuss, in particular, real estate signs or signage in general, but I think more toward temporary type signs, and to discuss graffiti and what the city might do in adopting some regulations related to graffiti. Try to recruit some people who might want to be on a sign ordinance review committee. I think they're very interested, I know they are about the graffiti and the signs, which was their original request for someone to come to speak to them. And the only other thing I want to do is to clarify something that I may have not stated exactly right in some communication about zoning designation and particular Holzer Clinic. The Holzer property right now is zoned M and I guess what I should have actually said was M and open space. The flood hazard area was zoned open space and so to continue those same zoning designations out that way, it would be M and open space. I'm a member of the floodplain task force and that's some of the things that we've been talking about, is that when you do zoning designations, and there's several different kinds of open space definitions that are not part of the Athens City Code. So there's some discussion about that, how to blend that possibly into new flood regulations, subdivision regulations, land development regulations. The floodplain task force has gotten very ambitious, it seems, you know what I'm saying, beyond just floodplain regulations and trying to take everything and make sure that it all fits. I'd like to commend Elaine Getz, she's doing a wonderful job, she's an intern for City Council and putting this all together, she's done a really good job of doing that. So hopefully then in the future, we'll see, because there is some discussion about taking all of the existing zones, which are not open space but are adjacent to the river, and making a recommendation that all of those be zoned open space. Hasn't been determined yet if the recommendation might be just the floodway or if it might include, say, the 25-year flood hazard area, the 50-year flood hazard area to designate open space. So that's, that would be a major rezoning of the whole, of the whole city, but that's something you might see come out of the floodplain task force as a recommendation.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's all I have, okay, thank you. Does anybody else have a communication up here? Now it's opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda, but we have a citizen who wishes to speak. You two have a star next to your name, what is it? They have stars next to their name. Other business, okay. I think four probably should be down, it'd be five and, you know, just change it around. Anyway, announcements and other business, we have, I have no announcements other than our next meeting, which will be scheduled the 4th, October 4th. Are we having any public hearings then?
I won't be here.
She won't be here. Okay, and we have a discussion down here of off-street parking changes recommended by City Council, but is this, you want to take?
Well, we do the zoning first.
We'll do the zoning questions first, because there are two questions on that and we'll discuss that last, okay? Is that all right with them?
That's fine with me, but zoning.
Oh, the zoning, we have to, last meeting we just had, we had to make a check to see if we had to have a public hearing. It was at our discretion and so I recommended that we do not, so therefore we could have a motion to, for both the properties that are in the annexation process right now for the Holzer Medical Clinic. And I think I worked with Melissa, the right one, that follows what Steve had said, that we would continue the zoning as M, because there's no sense having a building in a B3N and M, that doesn't make any sense. If we want to rezone later, we could rezone later. And then following along the open space, we've done all of that with words that it would be according to the final letter of map revision, would be the determination of where that is. Anything that was not raised to the 100-year floodplain would be open space then. So that's my motion.
If there was second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion of that? Nobody was, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, now the other property is a little more, that's the Funk property. When that property was petitioned to be annexed, it was one lot, which was, how many acres, Steve? Thirty? It went all the way up to Route 33 right of way, didn't it?
Yes, it goes clear up to the State House.
Right, and it's thirty-some acres. And that was all one parcel when the annexation was filed for. Since that time, they've come in and requested a lot split, saying they really only want the mortgage tied up for the land that's with the house and don't want the mortgage on the rest of the acreage. And Steve, you'll have to help me, I can't remember, how big is the lot size for the, you approved that one, right?
Yeah, that was, essentially what they did was, there was a split and transfer from adjoining property owner, the adjoining lot, which I believe may be in the same ownership. Mr. Funk's father lives, and mother live in the house, that was a lot of its own, they had to split some of that off to get enough road frontage off Door Lane to be able to make a lot, create a lot that would include the house. And it basically follows the driveway line up to the house, includes the house and then just comes back down to Door Lane and then there's this, I don't know, 20-acre plus, maybe almost 30-acre plus residual, which I suppose technically speaking is exempt from subdivision regulation, lots over five acres. But we're always, you know, always looking for residual properties too, just in general, the residual parcel, you know, is it too small, does it not have enough road frontage, is it really subject to the regulations? So I think that's what the mayor's referring to, there's been a little split proved where they cut out enough for the house and then there's still this, essentially the majority of the acreage, it's still there, undeveloped.
And there's enough road frontage for the other piece?
Yes, and there are several, well, there's several easements also included in the D, recorded easements, 50-foot rightaways to access from other properties, so it does have access, multiple points of access.
Did you say it goes all the way up to 33?
I believe, yeah, I'm trying to picture the map.
With Columbus Road, that's what I mean, it goes out all the way to Columbus Road and all the way up to the top of the hill?
When you go up Old Peach Ridge, you know, that's all in the city, but everybody's backyard on the, as you're going in on the left-hand side, it breaks back into the county, or it's in the township from the highway and then that whole hillside comes back down to Columbus Road. So it's basically that chunk of land between Oak Village Apartments and all the way up to Peach Ridge.
What about where the motel used to be, isn't that right along in there someplace?
It's right in front.
In front of it?
Yeah.
Do they own that or is that somebody that's?
Somebody else.
No.
But what it raises, I mean, because it came through as an annexation request of one parcel, getting annexed. And council, you know, is concerned because we have this time clock working of, you know, the 60 days where they have to make action to either accept it or not. And none of the review or none of the staff review also was looking at, is the water in the sewer adequate to handle additional lots, is, you know, is building etcetera? And we haven't done any of that and neither has the property owner suggested it, so one of the council members had suggested to me or we talked about, let's zone the lot with the house R1 and the balance open space, because we don't even know how air it is from the hillside regulations or anything else. And I know it's over 20 acres, so it wouldn't hit subdivision regulations, but it's potentially a subdivision could be created out of that at some point. And that, I think, would give the city more review.
So if eventually, in the future, they wanted to make a subdivision, they'd have to ask for zoning change as well?
They'd have to ask for zoning change, we'd have to come back to the Planning Commission. So we could at least get a chance to talk about it.
Yeah, that sounds like a good solution to it.
My discussion with the owner is that at this time, he has no extra development expectation or anything.
And this just assures that if he ever sells it off to somebody who does, they've got a process that they make sure they come back through the Planning Commission and look at, because I do think that's, again, hillside-type land, it's, you know, I was surprised at the current house in a way. That's a steep driveway and I don't think it meets any of our codes.
In times past, the code used to say that everything came in as R1 and then whenever you wanted to use it, you came in for a different zoning designation. I think what the mayor's suggesting is very similar to that and zoning it open space. It's been expressed that it's going to remain open space and this person has no intention of additional development, that doesn't necessarily mean that the next owner might not, or that someone might come along and...
I would make my motion that way.
I second it.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any other, other business?
We have this off-street.
Other, other?
Other, no.
We have, I mean, other, other besides that, other than that, yeah. We have a resolution, R1097, off-street parking changes recommendation to City Council.
This is 97, 10 years ago.
See what it says? That's the off-site thing.
I was not at the public hearing on this.
I wasn't.
I wasn't either.
Were you, Ray?
No.
No.
Was anybody, was that the public?
Good. Could you? And Harry's out of town. I'd already seen the minutes of the public hearing, there were some people who wouldn't oppose to it and some people in favor.
I believe, my recollection was Mr. Jim Cody spoke, Mr. Dave Sturbois.
Jack Stauffer, the lady that has the apartments behind Court Street Collections.
T. Ledwick.
T. Ledwick.
Yes.
And there was an attorney there who I believe represented the Athens County Property Owners Association.
Larry Payne was there too.
Yeah, Larry was there too. So a lot of the discussion, you know, centered around, I suppose, what would, you know, if you can't lease these spaces, if a student doesn't have a car, do they sit empty? Or those kinds of things where, you know, you kind of bleed into contractual kinds of things with leases and how might this affect a lease? The requirement is to roll the cost into the lease. So there were quite a few people that came and spoke and had, really had questions about it.
Part of my concern on this one has been where previous buildings have been built with excess parking or it would prove to be, and I always use the one-bedroom inefficiency, River Park, that our code says you will have two spaces per bedroom, even if it's one bedroom or an efficiency. So they went ahead and built 240 parking spaces for 120 units, which meets the code. And when I, when they first opened, then it could have changed since then, they had six apartments rented to two people and everything else was to one person. And so they then leased out the balance, probably the students living on the east green. The way this is worded, they would have to remain vacant because it has to. I mean, I understand the mission of council in a way of saying, you can't, if we've required you to have parking and you've done it, it has to go with the unit. And I have no problem with that at all. Where I'm having some difficulty is where it says, and neither you nor the person that has the parking space with the unit have the ability to lease that to anybody else. And that's where I'm afraid there's going to be vacant parking spaces in town that could be used, which is going to crowd the parking out to other places. And that's where my concern is, I'm not sure how to, you know, reword our recommendation back to them to get to that, but I don't like, I guess, the idea, although I can see their point, you have to have one way or the other, that one price gets both. And yep, that may hurt the person that does not have a car here in Athens, because previously they could have rented it for less. But it also encourages them shopping for parking and parking at more remote locations or parking on the streets and I see that as a bigger problem than, you know, the price of the rent and maybe more people will bring cars then. I guess I'm somewhere in the middle of that resolution, is I like the idea of one price, you get your unit or the bedroom within your unit and a parking space where it's provided, the other is, you know, does not. I still think, even though, I mean, you're always going to have problems with those grandfather that do not have the needed parking, it isn't going to solve any of that problem other than the fact that you can't separately charge for it. We have nothing but anecdotal evidence from the standpoint of some tenants complaining to people that they have to pay separate for their parking and we don't know how widespread that is.
I think there was some testimony at that public hearing that there are some leases that don't even match in parking, you know, it's just, it's a converted single-family home, there's a driveway, you don't pay extra for your parking. But where there's a high demand for parking and you may choose to live there because you want to be a pedestrian and not a motorist, the parking's negotiated separately, it's part of, it might be contained in the lease or it might be a separate agreement for the parking. So there are at least two different scenarios.
That part of the whole scenario, and they were bringing up, is when do we make this effective, because obviously right now, people are signing leases for the 08, 09 academic year.
Boggles my mind.
Didn't you ever see that little billboard going around?
Believe it or not, we have been receiving tenant landlord disclosure forms that have been signed for next year already, because a lot of people are looking for their place right now. And they've signed the lease.
You haven't gotten very many for this year?
Not as many as we'd hoped. So we'll take a different approach on it, this will be the second year, last year was just the first year, so this year will be a little different.
I think in addition to the problem of when does it go into effect and how can you, certainly can't make it retroactive and so on, I think it's a one-size-fits-all ordinance that doesn't really fit all and because of the situations that you talked about with the converted houses and so on, I also think that if I were a tenant who had been required to pay a lease that included the parking and I didn't have a car, I would feel I should have the right to sublet that parking space to somebody else, I'm paying for it already. My feeling about the legislation is that it doesn't address the different kinds of problems that we have with parking, it would be better to try to craft something that would work, would work better than to pass this one.
I think it might, I don't know, in my mind, it tends to make sense that if the parking spaces are required for the rental unit, that it would make sense to say that the landlord or property owner can't lease them separately from the units and leave it at that. And if the tenants who have the parking spaces don't need them, they can lease them out. Now I realize that that still leaves open...
They'll lease them right back to the landlord for the...
I know, but I guess there's all kinds of... But I guess there's all kinds of possi, you know, you can kind of what-if every piece of legislation to death. And what, you know, what I'm thinking about is trying to look at it from the standpoint of, let's try a step and see if it, if it accomplishes something.
Or makes it worse.
Or makes it worse, and then, you know, and then potentially come back and make additional changes later.
Well, if you do that, then you're going to have to deal with the fact that apparently some leases prohibit subletting, and other, other leases don't mention it or allow it, just for the apartment.
Right.
And, and so, if the parking space is rolled into that.
Right.
You've, you've got that additional problem. If you're prohibited from subletting your apartment, then you're probably prohibited from subletting the parking space, too.
That's a contractual arrangement between the landlord and the tenant, though.
Right, yeah. But, but that's going to have the effect of leaving empty parking spaces, too.
Possibly, yeah.
Well, for the places that have more parking spaces than required, that's another, I mean, that's another part of it, because that's the way they do it. But those are the bigger places. Did you say that this does not apply to houses, or did you say that houses converted to rentals? That people, because...
It applies, but it's...
Well, you don't know, I mean, I know two where they didn't use the garage because it was extra. You know, the houses, they have to have three, they have stack parking, but they have to have the three places for people.
Right.
And the one place, there was an extra spot, sort of, but they didn't use the garage because it was extra, cost them extra.
My comments were only directed toward, is the parking that's required included in the lease?
Well, I don't know. I, I just assumed that those homes were not, if they have their driveways and their garages, those were included in their payment that they made, they weren't charged extra, but I think a few of them do charge extra.
Right, and alone, again, that's...
Yeah, I would, you have to, I mean, it would be different, a different person does it every...
Well, part of it is, if you only have a one-car garage, is do you charge extra for that one person that parks in the parking space?
Yeah.
Versus the two that park inside, in the driveway, and, you know, or four, three could park in the driveway and still do it.
One of the persons who was at the meeting does that.
Yeah.
In the larger complexes, apartment complexes, I'm not exactly sure how it works. If you pay extra, say, where you're at University Commons, and they have a parking spot for every bedroom, I'm not sure of how that works. If you have to pay extra for that parking spot that's supposed to go with it, I know they monitor it, either by sticker or by hang tag. A lot of landlords that have parking, either parking lots or parking that goes with their apartments, have found that if they just have a hang tag, and they don't tie it to a license plate number, the tag gets passed around.
Passed around, yeah.
So, some of them go with stickers, some of them go with hang ta, just hang tags, some go with hang tags tied to a specific license plate number. And then those parking areas are all posted as private parking lots and private towaway zones, and they deal with that towing on their own. If someone's in someone else's spot, or it's not the right hang tag, or the tag doesn't match the license plate, so there's just, the more you think about it, the more different scenarios that there are. There's lots of different scenarios.
Sure. Well, you've got the one where it's grandfathered, and it's for four people, and there's two parking spaces, and they all have to pay the same amount of money, and which two get it, get the, get the parking spaces, and which two have to go find something on their own. But, I mean, there's all those, you know, those exist today, in case whether it's tied in or...
Oh, oh, Debbie, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see Debbie. She wanted to say something, said she's on city council, and probably it's not anything to do with this.
Probably got all those problems solved.
Just listening to the conversation...
You have to identify yourself.
Hi, folks, I'm Debbie Phillips, I'm a member of city council. I just wanted to, all the questions about whether people pay extra, or whether they're able to, you know, if they're being required to pay for something they're not using, I feel like that's a little bit outside of what our concern is on, on council. It's really about, our code requires that the parking be available, and the intention, I think, of the planning commission and of council was that that parking be available for the tenants. And since it is being leased out separately, I think, Joanne, at the public hearing, you said something about people who don't choose to rent it end up sometimes parking on neighborhood streets. So, if they're being asked to pay extra for that. So, whatever people charge, whether they charge more, and include that in the rent, or keep the rent where it is, all that is kind of their own business, how they decide to work that out, in my view. I think it's just the intention of our zoning code and our requirements around parking to make sure that if there are going to be a whole lot of folks living in these places, that they actually have available parking. So, that's all, if that clarifies at all.
I don't know.
What about the subleasing? Because that was specifically in the resolution, that you precluded the tenant or the owner of the property to sublease any of the required parking, or any parking, I think was the way it was worded.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I'm not familiar with the idea of people subleasing parking in other cities, the notion that if you have an apartment somewhere, you would somehow stake claim to a particular parking place and lease it out to someone else. I haven't heard of that. Maybe that happens in other places, but I'm not familiar with that.
What about the, the apartment complexes where the parking requirement's been satisfied by their being near to the city parking garage, or public parking of some sort?
Well, I think the, the places that are close to the parking garage, that counts for commercial spaces.
Only commercial? Okay, okay.
Who parks in that Cornwell lot up there by the, on Carpenter Street? That was supposed to be landscaped, and I still don't think that's landscaping with those rocks.
Desert landscaping.
And a stick in it, the rocks with the sticks.
It's my understanding that he makes those available. I think he charges for them.
But they're for his apartments, aren't they? The houses are in there?
Yes, maybe, right.
So, but those are extra, they wouldn't be, you'd have to rent those extra, and be an extra charge.
That's my understanding. I won't say that's true 100%, but I had the understanding that he, in previous conversations when he's been here, he says he makes it available to his tenants first.
First, but then if they don't take it, somebody else will.
Right.
Okay.
To answer your question about the landscaping at Carpenter, Carpenter Street parking lot?
I find that a lot, don't I?
That recently came on complaint to the tree commission. It was discussed at their last meeting. I pulled the records of the planned unit development. It was, it was approved as a planned unit development. And there were some landscaping requirements, and there has been note by the tree commission of some corrective measures that are necessary, also including some fencing, some curb blocking, and some other things. So, the owner will be receiving a letter from me saying that you're not in compliance with your planned unit development approval, which at that time included landscaping, and that was fif, about 15 years ago.
It was a long time ago.
So, that's, that's been looked, that particular parking lot's been looked at, just real recently.
Is there a statute of limitations on landscaping?
Well, it was done before the landscape ordinance, and it included quite a few things. But it was mainly a buffering along the little brick alley, little brick gravel alley that goes up beside it. There's one other thing I'd like to say. Every year, I try to get information out to different student groups, or to newspapers, about a lot of different things, information that's available at the code enforcement office. And I saw just the other day on the front page of the Post, and in newsletter publication from Off Campus Living, I had provided them what I called my top 10 list, but I had to call it my top 10 or more list, because it got a little longer. And one of the things that I really emphasized was, before you sign a lease, come to the code office and see how much parking's really available. Where is it at? Is there a variance? That it has some remote parking somewhere? Is it grandfathered with deficient parking or no parking? Be surprised how many places are grandfathered with no parking. Quite a few. So, as I do every year, I'm just trying to get that information out. Because now, people are looking for the place they're going to get next year, and so that's why I thought this was an opportune time to get that information out. There's not nearly as many parking spaces as there are people, for sure. 15,000 right now is about the max occupancy that we're looking at, according to zoning code, so I don't think there's 15,000 parking spaces out there.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other business they wish to discuss? What do you want to do about this? Do we have to do anything with this resolution?
I would like to try to rework it, but if the majority of the commission doesn't, that's fine.
How would you like to rework it?
Well, I think, I don't have it with me, unfortunately, so I don't...
No, no, no.
I think that the statement there, that parking that is required for occupancy of, should be, will be, should be included within the rental agreement for that, you know, unit. I have to ask Steve to find a unit for me again. But, you know, and then, I would, I would really would allow the subleasing of parking myself.
Well, if you don't forbid it, it seems to me that it then depends on the lease.
Right, it would. And, and I don't think the code should really address it at all. I just think that we should address the idea of, any of the parking that is required to get your rental permit must go with, with it. Now, I know we create an automatic on all one-bedroom apartments that actually have two spaces and meet the code. You automatically, in almost all cases, I mean, 90% have an extra space, and it's required to go with it, so...
Well, I like, I like the idea of not trying to address all the other situations, and, and dealing with, with it that way.
It kind of focuses on what the landlord has promised the city they would do, in a sense.
Right, right. That's what we want to do, for one branch.
So, do you want to wait until you have the...
Well, I would, you know, I could state that as the intent of the motion, and would have it back, you know, we could do it as a motion and adopt it, and then I could circulate with the final, final writing of it, and we approved it in essence again at the next time we have minutes.
Yeah, okay.
If you want to do it that way.
Is that what, is that a motion?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Whatever.
You get that motion right ahead.
Do they have it on there? Uh, you said it all, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, nobody else has any business out there? Disposition of the minutes of the last meeting. Did we do all that?
Yes, we did.
We had a busy meeting.
We went past 4:00.
That's fine, we were late. Mm-hmm.
I didn't see anything I would move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, now, it can't be just 3:13. Do, can't be just that time, no. Means I have to go back to work. What did we do before we adjourn here? Wait a minute.
We want to reach 41.
What have we done about, what are we doing about this? The site plan?
Oh.
You want to wait till you read it all? Steve has something to say.
After the last meeting, you, you didn't have the most latest version.
Yeah, we didn't have it.
And I got that from the court of council.
But this is it.
And got it to pretty, well, there have been, I don't know how they went, but there have been council committee meetings in the meantime, and some of that may have been changed. Let me, that's going to be, the bulk of it's going to be what's proposed. Let me check and make sure that there haven't been any additional amendments to it. For example, I know there's been some discussion about exemption for buildings of less than, and then the question was, 10,000 square feet, 8,000, 5,000, I'm not sure if that's in there or not. That may have been one of the most recent provisions.
Well, I think that one of my concerns about it had been, and again, it was, how do we administratively group this application along? And we're really saying, the service safety director declares when an application is complete, but the procedure for approval starts with, when recommendations are required, such recommendations shall be obtained from the appropriate boards, commissions, shade chief commission, disabilities commission. While there is a timeline on the planning commission, there is no timeline on the shade tree or the planning, or the disabilities commission. And I know most of those generally meet monthly. So, if the service safety director can't declare a complete application until after those processes have gone through, when they're required, I mean, for some projects, it's going to be a lot longer timeframe than other projects that don't require going to those other public citizens, you know, that review for us.
I can just kind of expand on that a little bit. For example, the shade tree commission meets once a month. They meet on the, I believe it's the second Thursday of every month, that's their regularly scheduled meeting. They may have a plan submitted, they review it, because a lot of these require consolidation approval. So, they send a correction letter to the developer, and he has to redo the drawing, send it back in, and then they don't meet for another month. And then there may be some other correction after that. Believe it or not, we're still working on corrections, shade tree commission's still working on corrections for Taco Bell. It's been that, that long. Getting things back and forth. You have a meeting, the letter goes out, the developer responds, they meet again, another letter goes out. So, it, it can be a very protracted process.
Well, see, I, it says when recommendations are required. Now, I didn't catch yet, but I have a, where's the, do we go to other sections of the code to find out where those are required?
Yeah, you would have to...
Because we've had a tendency, even at the planning commission, and sometimes it's the council to go ahead and approve, subject to the approval of those other bodies, which really, you know...
I think, as Mr. Rep had mentioned, you need disabilities commission for a review for a planned unit development, but you wouldn't just for a commercial site, yet both of them might have parking landscaping regulations.
Right.
So, yeah, where required could be, is going to be different for different projects.
Yeah, because I kind of would like to see if you or Ray would tackle, at least try to tackle it and tell me it can't be done, kind of, how flow chart out, how, okay, if this is approved, how are you going to handle it?
Yeah, it's going to take up all the flow chart.
I, well, I, well, you could easily come back and say, I can't, because there's so...
I'm sure we can, it's just...
Well, to me, sometimes, it's hierarchy of, like, approval processes, the first thing they have to do is five print copies and electronic and everything, and then it minksens that. Then later on, in here, the, following determination, the application is complete, the service safety board copies the application to other city departments is deemed necessary. That's exactly backwards from what we do. We have the developer meet with the city department heads, and then, based upon that advice, and saying, what's the size water line, sewer lines, and everything else, then they submit after review by the city departments, not, why would you then have to have them go back and review again? Doesn't make any sense. It's not the way we do it.
Quite, quite often, and even under the current system, we have preliminary reviews, for example, like with, with University Estates or whatever, where they would come in on an unofficial basis, and try to go over some of those things, but that wouldn't be covered in here. So, it's outside the process.
Well, should it be outside the process?
This is now, this makes it inside. Any building over 10,000 square feet, and any remodel of over 25% of the roof floor footage, or...
They, they changed the footage to 5,000.
Okay, 5,000.
Yeah, they amended it to reduce it to 5,000. And there were a couple of other changes they made in conjunction with the chamber of commerce, and I don't remember what those, what they all were.
Okay, I said in the paper they did, but I didn't, wasn't sure what it was.
Yeah. If I could, related to that, I'm a member of a committee that the chamber has called to kind of help them with Title 41. But the chamber also has been asked by council to come up with a developer's checklist, or a flow chart. So, they're working on both of those things at the same time, and so they're, they're aware, you know, the big flow chart, a lot of it's probably already been done, the chamber's, you know, done a lot of work on that already. So, it might be just finally tying up all these loose ends. So, really, the chamber has been a real focal point. So really, the chamber has been a real focal point on all this. And I will get you the latest version. I'll get it off the clerk of council and get the, get the revisions to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
If there isn't anything else, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some is.
There's Kay, you're all in favor?
Aye.
That's 3:20. I'll have to go back to work if I can't wait enough time here.